Please, call the roll. We have ten, correct? We have eleven. Good job, Julie. Let's, uh, can we throw up the mic? Get us online here. Good morning. This is Los Angeles City Council. This is the sixteenth day of May, 2014. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingdale, Bonn, and Busciano, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Caresser, Corrigan, Labange, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, Weston, eleven members present on court. Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Fuentes moves. Mr. Englander second. Next do- next matter.
Next is committed to resolutions for approval.
On these resolutions, Ms. Martinez moves. Mr. Correct seconds.
Mr. President, there's requests to continue item one D, five, and six to May thirtieth.
One D, five, and six to May thirtieth without objection. So ordered.
Items one and two are items known as for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that items one, B, C, G, and J may be received and filed in as much as the liens have been paid.
Correct. So we'll receive and file those. Are there any cards on those?
Uh, no cards on those items, but there are cards on others for, um, items one and two.
So we'll hold those that are appropriately noted. On the balance of those, could we vote on those right now?
Uh, nothing left to vote on in that section, Mr. President.
Got it. Okay, so continue, Patrice.
Items three through twelve are items for which public hearings have been held.
Yes, and I want to call nine special, but, uh, anything else on that? Mr. Mr. Weezer, and then Mr. Caress.
Seven special, please.
Seven special. Mr. Caress.
Uh, I'd like to call item eleven special.
Eleven special. Seven-eleven. That's, uh, pretty good there. I've never heard that before. Special. Okay. But I have heard number nine. Number nine. Number nine. It tells us who knows that anybody. There's one, uh, there's one Beatle fan. Okay. Next item.
Mr. President, Council should vote on the remaining items.
Let's, uh, open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Eleven ayes.
And for item four, the ordinance that will be held over for one week if not reconsidered with twelve members.
You got it? Thank you very much. Next item.
Items thirteen through twenty-two are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Let's open the roll for consideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Eleven ayes. Very good. On that, Madam Clerk. How many cards we have on what issues?
There are cards on items thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two.
So we'll hold those items for cards, but on the balance, we have some on the balance? Correct?
Yes, Mr. President.
Let's open the roll on the balance. Uh, hold on a second, please, Madam Clerk. Ms. Martinez?
Um, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen special?
Thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen special. Thank you.
Yes, uh, seventeen and eighteen.
All right, so for seventeen and eighteen in the balance. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
So ordered. Next item.
Mr. President, that brings Council to, uh, presentations or items called special.
Okay. Mr. Weezer, are you ready to roll? Yeah, uh, we have other presentations, but we could, uh, I could take one item real quick if we just get a quick report, Madam Clerk. I gotta call item nine up right now. Item nine, if Water Power could just take the center table. Joe, center table. Call it into the record.
Item nine is, uh, consideration of the Arts, Parks, Health, Aging, and River Committee Report relative to the status of the Griffith Park water system and grant opportunities.
Great. We have representatives of Water Power and Parks Department. I just want to hear a brief report. All our members are interested in reclaimed water, and this is excellent work by DWP, but I want more out of them. Thank you very much. Susan, please identify yourself and speak.
My name is Suzie Rogani. I'm the L.A. Department of Water and Power. Um, as Councilwoman Limbahn said, we're reporting on the Griffith Park South Water Recycling Project. And that project is to extend the existing water recycling system to the southern part of Griffith Park. One of the major uses of that water will be to serve the Roosevelt Golf Course on the southern end of the park. We anticipate Roosevelt using about a hundred million gallons per year of recycled water. And, um, once, once we have that project in place, we'll be able to have all three golf courses in the park on recycled water. This project actually has started. It's, it has three major components to it. It's a pipeline, it's a tank, and also a pump station. We have started this project this month with the pipeline, and we anticipate this project being finished in 2017. We have also been working very closely with Wreckin' Parks to look at other uses of reclaimed water since we have the source now close to the southern, uh, part of the park. There are some areas we've been discussing with them. There's a nursery that's close to, uh, Roosevelt Golf Course. There are also mediums on Vermont that we're looking at, Greek Theater, and also the Bird Sanctuary. So we've, we've been working closely with them on that. We've also aggressively sought outside funding for the recycled water programs. Um, we have funding from Prop eighty-four funds and also from the Metropolitan Water District to assist us in, um, doing this project.
Mr. Solisus, Superintendent of Griffith Park?
Yes, Joe Solisus, Superintendent, Recreation and Parks. Um, we are working closely with DWP, and as Susan had mentioned, we are working closely to extend that, uh, recycled water up into the canyons of, uh, Vermont Avenue. And, uh, we brought in Tom Gibson from our, uh, planning, construction, and maintenance team, and, uh, we'll be working on looking at, uh, extending that line from this point that DWP, uh, gives it to us.
Mr. Gibson, you want to add to that, please? And show the map for the members, please?
Hi, Tom Gibson, landscape architect, Department of Recreation and Parks. Uh, yes, we are looking at extending the water up into the Bird Sanctuary area. Uh, the issue there is obviously pressure getting the water up there. Talking, we'll be working with DWP to determine exactly how much pressure will be needed if we can come up from below. Um, and this map actually shows all the areas of the park. The purple areas are our park, our areas of the park where there are still old galvanized pipes, um, that are manually, happen to be manually operated by staff, so it's very time-intensive, uh, labor-intensive. And we're trying to work to, uh, switch those areas over to new smart irrigation systems and wherever we can to have those serviced with recycled water.
Thank you. Members, I just wanted to share this progress here because I know somebody have large parcels. Reclaimed water is DWP's middle name now. And this is from the sanitation of Glendale, Los Angeles plant, uh, an extension of that water, uh, so it's just very good. Thank you for the report. Keep building it safely and make sure no one, uh, some are concerned about the condition of the water and its health towards trees. Please answer those questions as you go forward because I know we already use reclaimed water on all the golf courses. Thank you, DWP. There's no members on the queue. Thank you, Wreckin' Parks. Have a good day. Go forward. Mr. President, I want to call you on right now.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Uh, I'd like to introduce to you a visitor that we have in the chambers named Roxy. She's, uh, two years old, and she came here this morning looking for a home. And, uh, before I could present her to the members and the folks that are here in the crowd, she's already been adopted. So the city's one-hundred percent adoption rate, uh, is, is still alive and well. But I did want to show the public that this is an example of the type of beautiful animals, companion animals that we have in our shelters. So, uh, I know you may be disappointed that you didn't get Roxy, but I'm sure at our other shelters, there's another Roxy looking for mom and dad. But Brian from the CLA, from the City Clerk's office, has adopted, uh, a Roxy. So with that said, I just wanted those of you in telepho- television land, we are, we have many more animals, dogs and cats that are looking for a home. So please come by, visit us, or call us, and, uh, and you can call us at eight-eight-eight, four-five-two, seven-three-eight-one. So with that said, save a life, adopt a dog, adopt a cat, or any of our other animals. Thank you, and our one-hundred percent adoption rate for the past nine years is still alive, Mr. President.
Well, Mr. President, I can go back to you. It's not a one-hundred percent. It's a thousand percent. Give President Weston a big hand on behalf of all the dogs and cats and animals. Mr. Weezer, are you ready? Mr. Weezer for a special presentation?
Excuse me, Mr. President. Before proceeding, Council should vote on item number nine.
Absolutely, Madam Clerk. Let's, uh, open the roll on item nine. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Fourth with on that. Next item.
Hi, how are you? I say you play softball. Do you play softball, don't you?
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm very excited today to have, uh, uh, members of the Felicitas and Gonzales, Gonzalo Mendez High School here with us, a school that was built when I was on the Board of Education and that we have continued to support now as a city. It is a school that was formerly known as Mendez Learning Center, a partnership school in Boa Heights. It was built to alleviate, um, overcrowding at Roosevelt High School, uh, which at that time was one of the most overcrowded high schools west of the Mississippi. As a board member at that time on the school board, we were in the midst of, uh, plan to build a hundred and sixty new schools throughout LAUSD. Mendez, however, was, uh, a few years behind schedule when I got to the Board of Education. We got to work and made it a priority, and it was completed one year ahead of schedule. Along with Oscar de la Hoya Charter High School, it became the first high school built in Boa Heights in the last eighty years. Then as a council member, we worked to acquire additional land so these kids could have a regulation-sized soccer field. I also, uh, we also wanted to, uh, make Mendez a top-performing school and to serve this country, and we made it a STEM-focused school. In the United States, as you know, many of our students are not being prepared enough with the skills to serve in these types of jobs. Uh, so Mendez High School opened its doors in September of 2009 as a complex, two small schools focusing on STEM, one on science and mathematics, the other on engineering technology. Today, it is one of, uh, it is a college preparatory high school still focused on STEM. Now, it's one thing to have a goal, to build a school, uh, where an area that sorely needed schools to alleviate crowding in the neighboring schools. Uh, but thanks to the students and people like Principal Mauro Batista and all the teachers and supportive parents, Mendez High School has become one of the most successful high schools in LAUSD since its grand opening. It has been named Partnership High School of the Year for the last three years running under the leadership of Principal Mauro Batista. In 2013, Mendez High School had a seventy-six-point API gain, the highest in the state of California and the highest in LAUSD among traditional high schools. Now, let's give them a big round of applause for that. Congratulations. As I said, Mendez is a folk focused on college preparation. Their thirty percent graduation rate increase in 2013 was the highest in LAUSD with ninety-two percent of their senior gra- seniors graduating class attending college. Their success in the classroom is only matched by their success on the playing field. Mendez High School has nine city league championship titles in cross-country soccer, basketball, and volleyball. I thought when we built that soccer field, they were just going to have some fun out there. They've done more than that. They've won championships on that field. Sports championships are one thing, but these kids are champions on and off the field. They represent the ideal student athlete. Mendez High School is also on student, uh, involvement, uh, through arts, culture, and public service. They regularly volunteer for community improvements efforts throughout Boa Heights. This school is succeeding way beyond anybody's wildest dreams, and I for one couldn't be prouder. Please join me in, uh, recognizing Mendez, the Gonz- uh, the Mendez High School by presenting them, uh, this city resolution, congratulating them on both their athletic and academic achievements the past few years. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Now, I'd like to, uh, introduce Mauro Batista, who will speak a little bit about the school and also, uh, introduce other members of the school who are here with us today.
Good morning. Welcome.
Uh, it's the first time I'm here, and I see we have a timer, so I'll make it quick because we're down to one fifty-five.
I like this man.
But, uh, on behalf of the students at Mendez High School, the parents of Mendez High School, the staff of Mendez High School, and the community partners in Boa Heights that help us each and every day, we're very honored to be here. It's an extremely humbling, uh, recognition. Um, but a lot of people have been working very hard. As, uh, Councilman Weezer mentioned, when we opened in 2009, there was a lot of high expectations for us. And last year was by far our best year, highest API growth in the state of California for a traditional high school, highest graduation rate increase in LAUSD. High School of the Year, three years in a row for the partnership for LA schools, and this year we'll do something not even the Lakers could do, and that is we're gonna win a fourth High School of the Year award. But up next, I'm gonna briefly introduce Amanda, who's one of our outstanding students. She's a Longquist fellow. She'll say a few words.
Hi, I'm Amanda. I am currently a junior at Mendez, and I just want to say thank you for giving our school this award, and I know both me and Wendy are really proud to be part of Mendez. Thank you.
Well, there you have it. Uh, great representative for the school, and one thing we're proud of is when this school first opened in Boa Heights, it certainly relieved the, uh, overcrowding, but at the same time, now we've seen these high academic achievements and athletic achievements. We're so proud of our students at this new high school, and we expect many great things to come. Congratulations again. Thank you.
Let's give him a round of applause. Come on, please. And thank you, Mr. Uh, Weezer. Members, I do want to make this announcement, and, and I request, uh, that you, you pay attention to this one. It pertains to the budget. On Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, the Budget and Fin- Finance Committee, uh, that we will re- present their report for a public hearing on this Tuesday. No action will be taken. No action will be taken. On Wednesday, we are convening one hour earlier on, uh, at Wednesday at nine AM, and that's when we will discuss in full the Budget and Finance Committee's report. Tuesday, we'll have a public hearing. We will close that hearing so that on Wednesday we can just proceed with the, uh, reports from the Budget and Finance Committee. The reason why I'm bringing that up now is because if any of you have motions that you'd want to submit, asking report backs or what have you, begin to formulate them today. Let us do the best we can to reduce the number of these requests that we get on Wednesday because if we get a lot and it's on Wednesday, we have to recess this council as we are processing those motions. So the best way to do this would be if you have an idea for a motion, work with the CLA, get it done today, get it done Monday, get it done Tuesday. We'll have CLA staff available to help you so that we can reduce the number of motions that we have on Wednesday. Mr. Corrigan, the Chair of Budget and Finance, will be sending, sending a, a memo, uh, explaining exactly how the process is gonna go. But I urge you, and I will again on Tuesday, if you have motions, submit, submit them early. So with that said, Mr. Labange. Mr. Labange. Pinch hitting for Mr. Sadio. The floor is yours.
Anita Gabriela, and right here, I'm being, uh, great opportunity for me to honor for Gil Sadio. She's a very wonderful person who was born here in Los Angeles.
No.
Close to it. I know, but raised in Los Angeles. We're all born in Los Angeles.
Okay.
That's how it works. The City of Angels, you know. That's where it starts and finishes here. But, uh, grew up, went to Bishop Connery High School. This is her family right behind me. I'm here pinch hitting for Gil because as all of us who know you, Anita, you know how passionate you were in helping us, uh, as a representative for AT&amp;T for over thirty-three years. She's a graduate of USC. Uh, the family home is still in my district there on Gramercy Place, and your, your parents are here. This beautiful tribute is to you for all your passion and excellent work that you have done in helping, especially on the workforce program. On the workforce program, which goes out to help people find jobs, find the education, find the path for, for the jobs that are necessary to help families. So Anita, on behalf of Mr. Sadio, on behalf of all of us, this is such a beautiful tribute to you. We want to present this to you fully framed and salute you for your over thirty-three years of service to AT&amp;T, government relations, helping people, all the programs. Give Anita a big hand. Good job. Good job. You got it. Say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Council President Weston, members of the council, especially Council Member Tom Labange and Gil Sadio and their staff. Freddie, say hi. You are fantastic. I am sincerely grateful for this recognition, and I am so proud to stand before you surrounded by family and friends. A special thank you to everyone, and thank you for my staff for being here. Today, I celebrate a long and rewarding career with a great company, AT&amp;T. And I have a bright future ahead. I'm proud and blessed to be able to retire after almost thirty-four years. I am a proud immigrant, born in Diriamba, Nicaragua, came to Los Angeles. I was born to parents who are hardworking, dedicated, and they said, I have these two beautiful daughters. I have a sister named Maria. They wanted to change their stars, so they took up and came to Los Angeles when I was only two years old. So I was raised in LA. I went to Los Angeles schools, as you said, Bishop Connery, then USC, um, and I love LA. I have served on the Los Angeles Workforce Investment Board and supported so many of the wonderful community-based organizations that make Los Angeles who we are. And you, as dedicated public servants, know how difficult that is. I was blessed to have been hired by Pacific Bell, a part of AT&amp;T, in nineteen eighty as a network design engineer, did operations, project management. In the second half of my career, I was dedicated to representing AT and the community, and I became very involved. I even ran for public office. So I have, uh, been a trustee at Glendale Community College since 2002, and I love that. I love that and working on the LA Workforce Investment Board because it is the future. It is that, you know, we're dedicating funds and time and talent to what will be the next generation and getting everyone ready and educated for a vibrant economy. Um, public service is demanding, as you well know, so I especially thank my husband Leo, my three beautiful daughters, my sister Maria, my father, my mother-in-law, and, and so many friends. My mother continues to be an excre- extremely important force in my life. I now look forward to the second phase with great optimism as a business owner, and I'm taking all of the things that I learned from my friends, from the excellent people that I worked with who have become my mentors. Um, as you know, AT&amp;T has a beautiful group here led by Mike Salachi, people like Donovan Green and Lupita Sanchez-Cornejo. Green and Lupita Sanchez Cornejo and Kevin Tamaki and others, and I'm taking the experience I've gained and their friendship, and I will be a new business owner, I am a new business owner, and launching an exciting new business, and I'm going to be a business owner who never forgets to serve the community and to continue to support education. You are great mentors and leaders, and thank you for this beautiful cheerleading moment. Thanks.
You're welcome. You're very welcome. And you know what I'd like just to say to you is it appears that your parents were right. It looks like you have changed your stars. So I'm excited for you. And Mr. Labange, you've done a phenomenal job in putting this presentation on.
Thank you.
You're the man. Pinch hitting for Mr. Sadio.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I also think what I want so special to Anita on the workforce, but also on the Community College Trustee Board, whether it's Glendale College, Pasadena, Santa Monica, or all the nine LA community colleges, that's, you're doing real good work there. Thank you, Anita. Give her a big hand.
Thank you.
Yeah. Are you going to take this in the back, Mr. Labange? Okay, so Mr. Fuentes, are you? I see Bonin. So as Mr. Labange takes his group into the back, I'd like to call on Mr. Fuentes and Mr. Bonin for our next presentation. Please, everybody, come on.
Good morning, colleagues, and thank you, Mr. President, for giving us an opportunity today to stand before you and to acknowledge and celebrate that this is Bike Week in Los Angeles. Yesterday was actually Bike to Work Day. This morning, I'm proud to say that Mr. Fuentes actually biked to work. I'm a little disappointed that he wasn't wearing the bike shorts here in council, but you know, you get what you get.
I saw the bike in your stall, Mr. Fuentes, and I have to let you know I'm impressed. Okay, Mr. Bonin, sorry.
So we're here today because not only is it important to acknowledge Bike Week, but it's important to acknowledge that bicycle ridership in Los Angeles is growing, and the infrastructure to facilitate that is also growing. It's also important to note that we have chronically spent too little money on bicycle infrastructure, and part of that is because we have not had the data or the metrics to do it. So over the past several years, advocates and volunteers throughout the city with the Los Angeles Bicycle Coalition and other organizations did a bicycle and pedestrian count, and this week they unveiled their report showing that bicycle ridership in Los Angeles is on the rise, and it's an important choice to give people to make. I'm very excited that this change is happening here in the city of LA, and it's not just in the city, it's happening all over the county. They've built protected bike lanes in Temple City on Rosemead, San Marino has plans for buffered or protected lanes on Huntington, and there are great protected facilities and bicycle-friendly streets in Long Beach. Great work is being done in Santa Monica. Mr. Weezer has done great work downtown, and I want to single Mr. Price out for the great work he's been doing, bringing stakeholders together and listening to advocates and finding a consensus way forward so that one of the signature elements of the citywide bicycle master plan, the MYFIG project, can move forward, and that's actually going to get approved on our calendar today. LACBCC did their study, and the report that came out Monday found that not only is ridership up in LA, but the data shows that more and more people are willing to invest in better bike infrastructure, and that the more that we do that, the more people will use their infrastructure. It's very important that we don't have a city just of sharos. That's the easy way for us to do it. We just slap sharos down on the street and say we've built a bicycle infrastructure. That doesn't do it. People need to be safe. People need to feel protected, and it's incumbent upon us as the folks who are invested with the obligation to implement this bicycle master plan, to build safe and protected bike lanes so that we can move from being a city that is clogged in traffic because we have been focused only on single occupancy vehicles, and move to a city where we have multimodal choices for transportation. The two quickest ways we can actually get out of gridlock in Los Angeles is building affordable housing and ending the jobs housing imbalance that causes the crazy traffic patterns, and building choices so that people can walk safely, so they can bicycle safely, so they can take trains or buses or mass transit and not all have to get in cars. I want to acknowledge one person here today on my staff, Paul Backstrom. Paul, step up for a second. Paul is my transportation deputy. He does all my work on Metro and on T Committee. He was selected this year by Streets Blog Los Angeles as the Civil Servant of the Year for the work that he's doing, and one of the things that's important to note about Paul is he lives this stuff. Every single day, he bicycles in here to work. This is his bicycle here today. You can see him and hear him in his bike shoes, walking down the hallways as he gets on this thing, going home every day. He makes this real, and I just wanted, on this week of all weeks, to acknowledge all your good work. And I'll have the pleasure of turning the mic over to today's cyclist of the day, Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Mike. And thank you to my colleagues for paying attention to this, because I think Mike hit it right on the head. You know, the opportunity for us to transform Los Angeles really does mean connecting communities. It means connecting where people live with where they recreate and celebrating the space in between, which is why I think Bike Week is so exciting. I, as Mike mentioned, would love to brag about my biking, but at home, when I visit with my family, my younger brother reminds me that he routinely does 80-mile rides on the weekends and makes my 15, 20-mile ride look like nothing. So I did ride in today. I'm very excited about that. I was able to use and utilize transit and the bike, and I will do the same thing, and I routinely try to do that in the district. If it's not going out on a grocery run, it's having informal meetings with some of my friends and colleagues, and I'll show up on a bike. But the folks that make it possible for us to be able to do that in Los Angeles deserve special mention. So if you would join me in celebrating and thanking the Los Angeles Department of Transportation, Metro, and the Los Angeles Bicycle Coalition, let's give them a big round of applause for their work this week, making Bike Week so important. So we know that Bike Week is an annual week of community events to make sure and promote that people understand that bicycling is a sustainable, smart way and practical way to get around Los Angeles. And so the programs include Bike to Work Day, Fix Your Bike workshops, guided rides led by experienced leaders, and even tonight, members at Union Station, as I make my way back to Silmar, I'll be stopping by the Union Station Bike Week festivities. But there are some folks that deserve special, special mention for making this week so, so important. Eric Bruins is the Policy Director for the Los Angeles County Bike Coalition. Adriana Serano, Harvey Slater, Vanessa Gray, and Tyler Watson also deserve your recognition for their efforts as neighborhood ambassadors for the Coalition. Dave Sotero and Jose Shokporian for Metro's Bike Week programming, and Austin Sauce from LA DOT's bicycle program. So give them a big round of applause. And lastly, for those folks who don't choose to use bicycles as their mode of transportation and are in cars, look out for bicyclists. It's so important. On the way here, somebody noticed that I had a camera on my helmet and said, you know, what are you doing? And I said, well, when I ride and I'm on the street, I ride with a camera to make sure that I can take a record of what happens out there. God forbid I get hit, but I was thanked by a couple cyclists this morning because they knew who I am in the district, and they said, thank you and the council for everything that you're doing to make Los Angeles safe, not just for pedestrians or automobiles, but for bicyclists. So give these folks a big round of applause. Thank you, Mr. President, for making the time.
Thank you.
Mr. President, there's one point I forgot to make that I think is very, very important. Bicycle safety and doing a bicycle network properly in Los Angeles is a gender issue. One in five folks who ride bicycles in Los Angeles are women. Again and again, we have seen that the safer a facility is, the more likely it is to have female ridership or femoral participation. If we truly want to be a city that is about gender equity, we need to have safe and convenient and protected bicycle amenities so that the ridership can be as much female as it is male.
I just wanted to say.
Oh, Mr. Labange.
I know, I snuck in the back door, Mr. Weston, but you missed me.
And you did.
That's all right. But listen, they did a thing the other day at the Good Samaritan, busy to the bikes, which was so important. Somebody was there. But it's so important that we remember safety, as Michael just said. And I think Damian Cavett, who we had to finish the ride just a few weeks ago, and Mr. O'Farrell was so helpful in that where the young man was hit by an impatient driver and dragged 600 foot down that off-around by the zoo. So there's nothing like a bike. I think the thing about the bikes, though, is freedom. You know, if you're looking for freedom, riding on a bike gives you that fresh air, but I do mention safety all the time, safety first, and as Mick Jagger said on 12 by 5, Mr. Keretz, if you're out at night and you're on your bike, don't forget to wear white. That's true. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fuentes, and Mr. Bonin. We're going to watch you exit riding the bike into the back. So, so don't, oh, so now he's, you're letting the bike ride you. That's a good photo.
This is a muscle beat shot with suits on. No tie.
That's a good shot. Good shot and good presentation. Uh-oh. Yeah, he said it takes two to, Mr. Labange, no hernias, okay? Never try to upstage Labange. Anyway, thank you. Thank you so very much. Okay, now they are riding them out of the chambers. So at this time, Ms. Martinez, if I could request that you take up the commissioners, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a few appointments to the Quality and Productivity Commission with us here this morning. I'd like to welcome and ask Cynthia Weichelt and Heather Rosenberg to come to the table, Would like to thank them both for agreeing to serve on the commission. I just would like for them to introduce themselves and say a little bit about your experience and what you think you can bring to the commission.
Thank you. My name is Cynthia Weichelt, and I am serving my third term in the Lake Baboy Neighborhood Council in Nor Martinez's CD6. I'm just coming off of being the president of the Neighborhood Council for the last three years. We have a very high-functioning Neighborhood Council, and we're pleased to have increased our community impact statement submission significantly in the past year. I believe that I can serve this commission by turning a keen eye toward the productivity of workers and the ideas that they have for streamlining their own workflow. Thank you very much for considering this appointment.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. I'm Heather Rosenberg, and I am, I have been a sustainability consultant for about 15 years, and I'm working now with the U.S. Green Building Council on a fellowship, looking at the relationship between the built environment and social equity, health, and resilience. So I am really interested in working with this commission to think about bringing a triple bottom line approach to, to looking at not only economic performance and customer service and all of those things, but also social equity and environmental performance. So thank you very much for this, this opportunity.
Okay, I have a few cards on these items, so if I could get Mr. Walsh, please come forward. Mr. Herman, please come forward. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential, or tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Welcome. I just want the public to know that in order to sit here, they had to write a letter of resignation, an undated letter of resignation. That's for all of Eric's appointees. In other words, and sign it. And if Eric doesn't like what they do, if they start sticking up for blacks or Hispanics instead of serving the West Side, Eric just puts the date in and their history. Now, if that's a lie, Ms. Martinez, say it's a lie. Destroy my credibility. We know that's what's happening, but I want to say something nice for you. I stood here years ago when a child pornographer, kiddie porn addict, was here, and he got caught, and now he's in jail. That's where you're sitting. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, I called Mr. Herman.
I represent Mr. Herman. Ladies, commission, men in commission, as you heard, Mr. Walsh is correct. At what sacrifice are you unethical to the public? For your public servants, you will serve the public. Public servant is a duty and a responsibility of accountability by all of you, but those of you who are appointed as commission don't wish to face Batman today, I'm going to utilize my one minute, but there's nothing more to say. John Walsh has covered the idea of what principles you should follow and what ideas of ideology this government at local level should follow. Stay tuned. Batman is back. One minute.
All right, let's prepare to vote. Ms. Martinez?
I just wanted to reiterate, I think both of you are well-accomplished and very impressive, and I look forward to working with you as chair of the Audit Committee.
Okay, thank you. Let's open the voting. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11-nice.
That passes. Congratulations to the both of you. Okay, if we can keep the applause, Mr. Weezer?
Item seven, sir?
Yes, we will take up item seven at this time.
Thank you. Colleagues, I just wanted to mention briefly, this is a Section 245 for the use of a pedestrian bridge in a development project in downtown Los Angeles. Now, I'm not a fan of pedestrian bridges as we are creating a more walkable and livable downtown. However, I think in this instance, it is very different, given the situation of where this project is being put in. It is right next to the 110, the 101 freeway, the 110 freeway that has an overpass, and the bridge will be parallel to that freeway bridge, and it's only for urban circulation. It's unfortunate that this has been characterized as something to avoid the homeless or avoid a homeless encampment. Now, homeless encampments move all the time, particularly in this area of downtown Los Angeles, so it's not about, it's not really a homeless issue in terms of why this pedestrian bridge is being built. It's simply for internal circulation amongst this development, and secondly, the developer has agreed to actually light up the street area with additional funds and has also agreed to fund the maintenance of other pedestrian bridges in other parts of downtown. I think it is a good project to move forward with, but I just want to say, as someone who has advocated for complete streets, and if we look at what we're doing on Broadway to create the biggest road diet we are doing anywhere in the city to encourage more pedestrian activity, I know the concerns that were raised by many about this, but I think in this instance, it is very different as to why or the reasons we wouldn't encourage pedestrian bridges anywhere in downtown, but this case is very, very different. So I ask for your input. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Before Mr. Weezer, I was around when they started pedestrian bridges, and they never completed them. There's nothing wrong with them, but there's, there was a concept that the planning department didn't like them when they did the redevelopment of the Bunker Hill area, but the Parker Development here, at Temple Street, at the interchange, at the four-level. But the Parker Development here, at Temple Street, at the interchange, at the four level, this is very much necessary. So I support greatly the councilman of the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And I'm looking for Mr. Englander. Someone can find him for me. One of the staff, I would appreciate it. We'll go to item 16, Mr. Sax. It's my understanding on 6... Yeah, I'm on 16, and I called Mr. Sax.
Good morning, Arnold Sax. And what I'm gonna talk about here is on the back page, actually, the last line of this item. It mentions that department's adopted financial policies do not apply to this item on your agenda. So I was wondering if you could give us some background on the department's financial policies for the DWP. It's pretty interesting, last week, there was a story in the newspaper about DWP and power poles, transmission line poles, and they increased the number of transmission poles they were gonna put in the ground from like 2,000 to 5,000. And yet, the same story mentions that the crews that are gonna install these poles have been reduced. Well, that's a financial policy. How does that work? And how about that policy where they're looking for $30 million that was spent over 10 years or $40 million, yet they're spending $110 million for safety? How does that policy work? So maybe you could give us some background into the DWP financial policies and how they are used regarding these agreements with these other cities. I know there was an agreement with Anaheim that really didn't make sense last week. I didn't know this was on the agenda, I would've brought the paperwork. But last year, there was an agreement that was an agreement that went in two different directions. So it really wasn't an agreement, it was a disagreement, and the city got hammered on it. Got an explanation from the DWP, the explanation, the answer was, there is no answer. So again, my concerns, again, with DWP and the financial policies and the facts of the financial policies don't seem to make sense if nobody explains them to the public. All you get is, we hammered out a great deal for DWP. No, you didn't.
Seeing no other cards, no speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And that ordinance will be held for one week?
Yes, that ordinance will be held for one week for consideration. Next item, please.
Item 11, called special by Councilmember Corretts.
Okay, we have cards on that. But public hearing was already held, so we'll go ahead and... Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to point out this action, that we have to say no to intolerance and blatant disregard for human life. As I think you're all aware, the Beverly Hills Hotel in Beverly Hills and the Bel-Air Hotel in Los Angeles are both part of the Dorchester collection of properties owned by Brunai Investment Agency and arm of the Brunai government. And now that the Sultan has announced a new criminal code that will implement extremely horrific and unbelievably harsh regulations, we believe we have to take some action condemning this. Under the first phase of the legal code, fines and jail time can be imposed for not attending Friday prayers. Under the second phase, severing of limbs as well as public flogging for property crimes will be implemented. And in the third phase, in 2015, death by stoning will be allowed for adultery and gay sex. Obviously, we have to join the United Nations and the Beverly Hills City Council and others who have taken a stance on this and express our outrage. And despite the fact that this would help reduce business in Council District 5, where the Bel-Air Hotel is, I think we have to make it clear that these kinds of unbelievably oppressive laws have to be spoken out against and opposed, and the City of Los Angeles should be on record calling for this to end, and then look at stronger measures if this hasn't changed in the near future. So I ask you all for an aye-vote.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Seeing no other speakers on the queue, we'll open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Great, thank you. Item 1 is called special for cards. Arnold Sax, followed by John Walsh, Eli Wan. And if the other two can line up behind the second set of ropes.
I don't want...
Good morning.
Good morning. Item 1 is kinda like my specialty, 'cause I see City Hall taking more money from people that already own a home, when ridiculously saying that they wanna end homelessness. So what happens to these people that have to pay a lien for $5,296, $733, $508, $1,500, $6,000, $2,000, $1,000? What happens to all those people? If they can't afford it, they go out on the street. You are a bunch of thieves and liars. You are trying to make everybody homeless simply to recruit money. You're a bunch of thieves and liars. One minute only. Hold my time.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. See our endorsements, they're up there right now for election. And HollywoodHighlands.org, at Hollywood Dems. Yes, this concerns rogue landlords. But you know what? It's time for us to expand this. I think we should fine the Sultan of Brunai $1 million. He is an homophobic homeowner. He is a homophobe. An important thing at this city council is to go to Brunai and make sure this doesn't happen.
If you can stick to the item, that's not the item.
It's the number-one issue in the city. The Sultan of Brunai's homophobia. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sax. There was an article in the newspaper, L.A. Times, about Philadelphia and its plan to fight blight. They mentioned that they have... City inspectors have investigated 13,000 vacant properties in the city and violated and cited 9,000 of them. And the reason I bring this up is, again, it's the use of public resources and manpower. You have a blighted home initiative that you have yet to find one person cited and/or guilty of. This article goes on to state that Philadelphia has a blight court to take property owners to court to collect $300. Your initiative, your city council initiative that was worked out here, $1,000 a day. Good thing you're having budget discussion. What could you do with $1,000 a day if you had 13,000 homes that were blighted? Thank you.
Thank you. Emilio Vega? Not here. Okay, we'll go ahead and file that card. Seeing no other cards on that item. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Great, thank you very much. Item 2. One card on item 2. Lizraga. Milagros Lizraga. No longer here. Daniel Josephson?
Good morning. My name is Daniel Josephson, and I'm appearing on behalf of the Park at LAX in protest to the lien that is being sought to be imposed against my client. The reason for my appearance today is to state that my client has not been given or afforded the rights under the municipal code to the assessment review that my client is entitled to. In addition to which, as would be presented at this assessment review, what has happened essentially is that my client started business in September of 2011. The assessment that was issued against my client states they started business in 2010. So the assessment specifically has approximately one year and eight months on it that are out of the appropriate or they're out of the relevant time period. I have a package here that I'd like to present to the council showing the various... Showing evidence and documentation to support the fact that my client didn't move into the present location in the City of Los Angeles until September the 16th of 2011. My client is a...
Sir, so I don't want to cut you off, but you can finish your time if you'd like, but I was just notified that we can continue the item per your request for two weeks, which would take us to May 30th?
I'd like to do that, Mr. President.
Great, okay, we'll go ahead and do that. That'll be the order then, without objection.
Thank you.
And, Mr. President, just for the record, that's items 2A and B.
Correct, 2A and B. And Ms. Lizraga, you were called earlier. Come on back up.
Good morning. My name is Milagros Lizraga, and I am the new president of Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council from CD 4 and CD 13. And we are doing a serious outreach with the impressive results of the March 30th election tell us that very good outreach needs to be done, very aggressive outreach needs to be done. We need more constituents' participation. So the new board members were greeted with a collective letter of resignation of the four members that were from the previous board. So we have four vacancies that we have requested the City of Los Angeles to put in their website, and since they are all at-large members, candidacies, please, if you know anybody who can be a good candidate, reach out for us. We are looking for the best people to serve. What the neighborhood councils needs to be is to have a good liaison between all constituents and the City of Los Angeles. There are some things circulating that we have sent out to Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell and Councilmember Tom Labange that, yes, some questions that we have. We're looking forward to meeting with you guys to discuss later. And, well, that's all that we wanted to say. And besides, also to let you know that for us, Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council, for myself, besides personal and business interest, it has a very important interest because it's historical. The roots of my Peruvian-American community are there, so it matters to the past Peruvian generations, present and future. And right now, we have the honor to serve all stakeholders from Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council. We're here to make that the best. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And with that, we'll go ahead... John Walsh? You gonna pass? Well, I'm gonna call you up on your other items too, but we'll pass on that one for now, that's fine. Arnold Sax? Pass? Oh, no, okay, you don't have one on 2. Okay, so there's no other cards on 2, so we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay. That takes us to items 19, but we'll go ahead and take the balance of the items on the regular agenda, 19, 20, 21, and 22. So with that, John Walsh. John, if you want to come on up, you got three minutes remaining. And that'll be on items 19, 20, and 22.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Item 19, community improvements to parks. We're all for that. Most of the community improvements are west of La Brea, where the well-off white people live. But don't worry, you're Hispanics and African-Americans, as you know, your politicians are bought off. But I must say, the white politicians do defend the white people and the interests of the white people over the interests of minorities. Number 20, and remember, when I speak about racism, I understand it because I'm a white guy. We invented it. Number 20, various tree trimming. The tree trimming, I hope that 8, I hope they're doing a good job of tree trimming in Councilmanic District 8. That's Bernard Parks District. I know that their idea of tree trimming in Hollywood is chopping down the trees. I mean, we have been laid waste in Hollywood. Come to Hollywood, and even the dogs won't come to Hollywood because the trees aren't big enough to do what the bums also do. Number 21, urinate all over Hollywood. Beautification in Council District 14. Now, Council District 14 is Jose Weezer. Well, I expect, Jose Weezer, if you want to look at a beautiful council district, don't come to 13. It's graffiti, it's full with graffiti. Hollywood Boulevard averages, if you go to crime mapping, a rape every two days. It's out of control, it's ugly, and the Hollywood Walk of Fame is falling apart. And Tom Laban says all the stars are in good shape. Well, I'm gonna put the worst stars up there. The beautification doesn't exist. And as far as street furniture is concerned... What does street furniture mean? You put up, you have put up these benches on stops where there are nobody, that nobody uses. The benches were put up in Hollywood and street furniture all over L.A. with ads on the back of them. They are really not street furniture, they are implanted sidewalk ads. The same company go to Beverly Hills that put up the bus stops in Beverly Hills, they are identical to the ones in Hollywood, except, and in the City of Los Angeles, except the ones in Beverly Hills and Santa Monica do not have advertising billboards on them. They are, it's an onslaught. And I want to do say one thing, HollywoodHighlands.org.
On items 19 and 20, you have two minutes left.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sax. Actually, I did have three cards, 19, 20, and 21, and there are three different sources of funds here. Clarks, which is recycling funds, AB 1290, which is money coming back from the state that used to go for redevelopment, street furniture. What's not mentioned here is billboard, bus bench, and pipeline revenue. And in this article about L.A. lawmakers press for cleanup of city alleys, it mentions that other councilmembers have had to dip into their discretionary office funds. Discretionary office funds. That's what these funds are. Discretionary office funds. And you know you get to dip into them, but the public never finds out what's the balance of these discretionary office funds. And why not send those discretionary office funds to the neighborhood councils? We just had somebody here from neighborhood council. How much of the discretionary office funds get to go into their hands for some of the projects they want? And these are the funds get turned over every year. They're re... They come back in every year. Every year, the council districts get those funds that go directly to the council office. This isn't a one-time deal. a one-time deal. So maybe we can get the city comptroller to find out, get a list of all these discretionary funds that end up in the city council office with the city councils' men's or women's opportunity to spend how they feel, and we can find out how much is going in. I remember a few years ago, when Wendy Grill was the auditor, and she was supported, by the way, by this blogger, she lost her election. She mentioned it was like $40 million in AB 1290 funds. Never heard another word about $40 million in AB 1290 funds. So $40 million there, you get six or seven discretionary funds, that's $250 million.
Thank you. Juan, come on up. Four more minutes, you've got items.
Yes, I, um-
19, 20, 21, and 22.
19, 20, 21, um-
And 22.
The only thing I want to say is to the Sultan of Burnai, you are living in the Middle Ages.
That item's already off the agenda.
Oh, city council? Motion, Weezer, relative improved to the park, bleh, bleh, blah.
If you could stay on the agenda item.
I am. Motion, Parks, O'Farrell-
You're actually just reading the agenda item. If you can speak to the agenda-
That's not an agenda item?
If you can speak-
19, 20?
Speak, speak to the agenda item.
Yeah, I am. I'm trying to read it. You're interrupting me. You're interrupting my thought process.
I'm asking you to just stay on the agenda item.
Okay, quit interrupting me. Motion, O'Farrell, relative the funding for various, fire training efforts in Council District 8. Motion, O'Farrell, relative to the funding for community improvements. The whole city needs improvements. Everywhere I go, the streets are broken up. And they've been broken up for the last six years. I've been riding a bike. They have stolen 30 bikes from me in the last three years. There is no safety in LA. LA is a crappy city. What else do you want to know? I would stay away from LA like Mr. Welch tells us. That is one wise guy that knows what's going on in this city. There's too much violence. It's one of the crappiest cities in the world.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, before we call the next speaker, we've got a special announcement from Herb Wesson.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President and members. I'd like to take a moment and present to some, introduce to others, the, I guess I can still say newly-elected mayor of the city of Hawthorne. This is Mayor, come on, they see me all the time, Chris, Chris Brown, the mayor from Hawthorne, is visiting with us today. A young mayor with a lot of creative ideas. And I just wanted the people around this horseshoe to, to know who he is because I think we'll be working together a lot in the future. Mr. Mayor, welcome.
All right, let's put our hands together. The mayor, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and, Herman? Call you up on items 19 and 21.
Sir, I'd like to correct that for the record. This is Batman speaking on behalf of Mr. Herman of Los Angeles Live. All you folks, we're talking about the funding for beautification, item 21. We're talking about improvements for parks, item 19. We're talking about a special 26 that was never discussed. But the whole reason Mr. Batman is back is to read this letter regarding the US Department of Transportation received a complaint on April 1st, 2014, from the US Department of Justice, seeking to file a complaint against the Public Works Department of Public Works, California. We have forwarded your complaint to the Federal Highway Administration Office of Civil Rights for review of the appropriate action.
Mr. President, the speaker appears to be off topic. Okay, you gotta, you gotta stay on topic, please, on the agenda items.
Mr. Speaker, I believe I am speaking about the Department of Public Works here. Am I correct? Is this the issue, Public Works? Didn't I not read that on this confirmation from the US Department of Transportation Office Secretary? So let's stick to topic, sir. Batman knows what he's doing. End note. As a state of local government, you must eliminate any eligibility of criteria for participation in programs, activities, and services that screen out or tend to screen out persons from speaking. I am speaking to the public on behalf of Mr. Herman as Batman, representative of Los Angeles. All you Angelenos, the testimony today is for the record. I will give this letter on behalf of Mr. Herman to Mr. Englander for file. For the record, Mr. Englander, dated from Lucille Roybo Ellard, United States House of Representatives, 500 Citadel Drive, Suite 320, Commerce, California, 940. Again, funding for community improvements to parks. Batman is speaking on behalf of Hazard Park in Boyle Heights, CD 14. As you see, Mr. Weezer running out. Come back, sir. Address the real issue. Mr. Weezer is not present. Going back on issue, funding for the beautification services of Council District 14, recommendations by Weezer and Price. Mr. Price, are you a part of District 14 or not? Mr. Weezer has some issues in Ramona Gardens regarding race. That needs to be addressed. Hopefully, you two will work that out for Hazard Park. For the record. Going back on topic now, Mr. Englander, pro temp, reading this transfer appropriations of $54,000 from Council District 14 for the street furniture revenue fund. You couldn't find money to fix sidewalk and streets in parks. You could not find the right point of view when it came to civil rights of people with disabilities and that of the elderly in Council District 14. That's the reference of this US Department of Transportation Office, the Secretary of Transportation, letters all about, two-page, which I, Batman, will leave on behalf of Mr. Herman here. So you see, Mr. Englander, the public, under the Brown Act 54950 to 54963, is accurate. Thanks to the Senate, thanks to the agencies of the Department of Justice for acquiring our inquiry about the complaint at Hazard Park regarding the pedestrian walkways on Soto Corridor off of Charlotte, when all of you exit the freeway of the San Bernardino. Batman is back.
Okay, seeing no other cards, no speakers on the queue, we'll open the roll on those items, 19, 20, 21, and 22. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Great, thank you. Where does that take us?
Mr. President, do you wish to reassess the regular meeting and convene the special?
Yes, we'll go ahead and do that and convene the special. There are no cards on items 23.
Excuse me, Mr. President. First, we need to call roll. Bloomingfeld, Bonin, Busque, and El Cidio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Caress, Kecorian, Labonche, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson. Ten members present, a core, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. You did read Mr. Parks in that, and he's not here, just as a notice of correction. And then with that, 23 and 24, oh, you read all the names. Okay, never mind. Read 23 and 24, there are no cards, no speakers on the queue, so we can take both of those items together. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the
10 ayes.
Great, thank you very much. And 25 and 26, we have cards on both of those.
Angelenos, motion by Kecorian and Bonin, we heard about the issue on bicycles. Now we're talking about funding for installation of rectangular rapid-flash beacons. Finally, we hear an idea that benefits those of who are blind, those who are disabled, those who have disabilities that use and occupy sidewalk and streets and have the need for rapid-flash beacons. ADAG compliance is a result of your action to improve public right-of-ways, improve public pathways, improve for the disabled and elderly. Batman is back. 2015, Englander, my movie. In my hand, I have the proposal for you gentlemen. Mr. Fuentes, one for you. Mr. Weezer got his, that's why he ran out. Mr. Bonin, I have yours here in my hand. Mr. Kecorian, who's not here, you will not get one. Mr. Bonin, I have one in my hand. Mr. Bloomingfeld, I have one in my hand. Mr. Price, I have one in my hand. The list goes on. For the record, folks, Batman shares apathy for the disabled, for the homeless population who are disabled, for our veterans, our veterans, United States Americans, under the issue of item 26, safety at the pedestrian crosswalks, bisecting Magnolia near the intersection of Magnolia. Fix the issue on the corridor of Soto, Morango and Soto. We need ramps.
Okay, Arnold, on 25 and 26? Followed by Juan, followed by John Walsh.
Yes, thank you. On item 25, I was just wondering, who is going to cover the cost of getting this fire hose into the city of Stepanacurt? Is that paid for by the city of Los Angeles? Are you gonna work out a deal on that 1,500, 1,600 feet of surplus fire hose? But item 26, again, it refers to discretionary funds here, item AB 1290. And what's really interesting down here is, is this, how you break this down. Salaries, account title, 1090, salaries, overtime. You know, good managers, the only thing they are able to control is overtime. The police can't get paid for their overtime that they put in, and yet you're spending overtime money for this funding, for this, putting these beacons in. And pedestrian crosswalks, again, a legal descriptions. When you had a lawsuit with the ADA, it was pedestrian right-of-way. What's the difference? Well, legally speaking, there's gotta be some difference if you use that designation in your legal briefs as a crosswalk instead of a right-of-way. So why not use that legal description in your agenda items? And overtime, again, good management, you're talking about budget and, and coming up with budget discussions next week. If you can't control overtime, then you're not really good managers. And if you're not-
Again, you're not, you're not on topic, so-
I'm talking about the salaries right here, sir. It says overtime instead of regular time. That's on the topic. The topic of how you spend city money and discretionary funds. That's the topic.
Juan, on 26.
Yes, on this item, I would like to waste city councils' time because they waste hours all the time.
Okay, again, you're not on topic. If you can, this is the last warning. I've said it three times in the last previous time you were up there. So stay on topic or-
All right.
You can sit down.
He gets off topic all the time. Nobody bothers him. That's okay, because he's German and I'm Mexican.
Okay, so that was the last warning. So, but thank you very much. John Walsh, come on up. John does a good job of staying on topic. Thanks, John.
I know how to fake it. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. You know, when I came here first time, 1985, somewhere around then, Bradley was here. This is the most bizarre item I have ever seen on your agenda. Somebody said, "We have, we have 1,600 feet of surplus fire hose." You know, I think we should keep it. I mean, yesterday, we had 50,000 gallons of crude oil from a ruptured pipeline in a minority area on San Fernando Valley Boulevard. I think we should keep it. But what are we gonna do? Hey, someone says, "Let's send it to Azerbaijan," because that's where the city, which I'm afraid I've never heard of up until now, Stepanacurt, is in Azerbaijan. Well, who can we get to send it to Azerbaijan? Because they need a lot of hose in Azerbaijan. Hey, let's get the Armenian Western Regional National Committee to do it. This is so simple. This is not anything ridiculous. And hey, and who's gonna pay for it? Well, it doesn't say here. Is the National Committee of America, Armenian Committee of America, gonna get paid off on this? I don't know. But we're sending 1,600 feet of hose while, and none of us talk, nobody's talking about what was called a lake of fire, a lake of fire in the LA Times, of what goes through a hose, what goes through a pipe, crude oil. You don't give a damn about people who live in that neighborhood because they're not white. HollywoodHighlands.org. Yes, an all-white jury.
That, yes, Mr. Labonche.
The city attorney, the history of the city of Los Angeles is often shared surplus equipment not necessary for our use to other cities, whether they're sister cities, friendship cities, or cities in Los Angeles, or the state of California, Los Angeles County. So for the public, I wanted to let them know to counter the comments by the public speakers. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Great, thank you, Mr. Labonche. And with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those remaining items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That concludes the special agenda. We'll go ahead and adjourn the special agenda and convene the regular agenda and open it up for general public comment. For general public comment, we'll go ahead and open it up for one minute each for general public comment. Ms. Rivera, followed by Estrella, Estreya, Galindo? Come on up, if you're here. Please, yes.
Was I following someone, or is it my turn?
No, you go ahead, if you're ready.
Good afternoon, good morning. My name is Estrella Galindo. I am a, thank you, I am a newly-elected member of Pico Union Neighborhood Council. I am here speaking on behalf of a few or some of our board members and the community as well. As new members, as new elected members, and even the re-elected members, we have not been sworn in as of yet. The elections took place April 3rd, 2014, and it's been well over a month, and we still have not been sworn in. We are asking for your assistance and for you guys to hear us out. It is starting to turn out to be a racial issue. We are trying to deviate from that. We don't want this to be seen as a racial issue. We want to work with all the community members, Korean-Americans, the Hispanic, Latinos. We want to work with the mayor's office and everybody else. We need a date confirmed to be sworn in as early as possible. The date has been changed on multiple times.
Thank you. I don't want to cut you off, but I want to give the other speakers a chance to speak as well. So, great, thank you so much. Francisco Rivera?
Good morning. My name is Francisco Rivera and a stakeholder in Pico Union. And basically, I have 15 envelopes here, one for each council member, you know, to let you know about the situation, a problem with the Pico Union Neighborhood Council, that there has been discrimination against Latinos- there has been discrimination against Latinos, you know, and the General Department has not really acted properly on this. And there are problems in other neighborhood councils. So this is a wake-up call for you. Thank you. So I want to deliver this for the... Thank you.
Okay, no, thank you very much. Emilio Vega?
My name is Emilio Vega. Good morning. I'm the outreach person at the Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council, and this is a direct question for Mr. Ofero and Mr. LaBanche. There is an email that is get by Milagro Lizaraga, who is the new president, and the emails say that the all-not-Latinos member resigned in protest because the outside group have taken our neighborhood council. And they say they are forming a new group, which is supported by CD IV and CD 13, who are Mr. Ofero and Mr. LaBanche. I want to know, you are protesting against who? Against Latinos? Against the four elected members? Who are you protesting against? I would love to know that. Thank you very much, and have a blessed day, folks.
Thank you very much. Anthony Thomas?
This information is for them, for one of the, yes, for each one of them. Morning, Mr. President, members. Anthony Thomas, representing the California Independent Petroleum Association. I'm well aware that the measure passed out insofar as Senate Bill 1132 and the council's support for it this morning out of the Rules, Elections, and Intergovernmental Relations Committee. Just wanted to add our comments about our request that the council, once it comes to the floor, not support Senate Bill 1132. This body itself supported Senate Bill 4, which, from our perspective, is the most comprehensive and highly regulated measure in our industry is that it's ever seen, not only locally but internationally. Given that there is no hydraulic fracturing going in in the city limits of Los Angeles, we're asking that that be taken into consideration. We're asking that hydraulic fracturing still be allowed in the city, in the county and city of Kern, of which 97% of our business is done. We would ask that, just once it comes to the floor, that you not support 1132. Thank you, Mr. President, members.
All right, no, thank you very much. All right, before I forget, item 20, Madam Clerk, forthwith, without objection, per Mr. Parks's request. Thank you very much. Henry, come on up, Henry, followed by Dr. Williams and Brian Barajas. Dr. Williams and Brian Barajas, if you can get behind the second velvet rope to be ready, thank you so much.
Oh, one minute. Well, in one minute, I got to show how the members of this council and the Hackler Board are suffering from a professionally crafted disease, can't remember to account for trusted deductions of Hackler and Colley employees. So wish y'all's problem, didn't your momma tell y'all how to rewrite and count right? Time to play the dozens. If you take six from 12, you wind up with six. If you add six to six, you wind up with 12. Take three from nine, 12, you get nine. Add nine to three, you get 12. Come on, everybody know hindsight is 20/20, and my check stubs and MOU show how much you took in the first place, and failed to account for in the second place, and go to O in the third place, in the future tense. Thank you, and the future is now.
Good morning. Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council, but also Sierra Club Fracking Oil and Gas Committee. This morning, we had a small success in that it was a unanimous vote to support Senate Bill 1132, which goes to the Appropriations Committee of Senate on Monday. However, there's more things going on. Next Tuesday, there will be a meeting in the Holman Church on Adams to consider what LA is going to do about one specific site. But there's actually about 20 other sites within the city limits of LA that have had problems. Applications for zoning variances have been withdrawn because they were stupid, and they did not protect the neighbors. You need a good neighbor policy for all oil and gas operations in the city of Los Angeles.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody interested in what Keisha Rogers will be doing? She's in the runoff in Texas for Senate. Go to LaRouchePAC. If she wins, this would take care of everything that, when somebody says state rights, local rights, you have to understand they were miseducated. We have a union, and it has to be perfected. Otherwise, racism reigns, and the fascist in Ukraine, and the United States, well, it's not the United States, actually, under Obama, or anybody like him. So the American citizens are going to have to restore the republic if they wish to survive. If every citizen of the world wishes to have a future, then go to LaRouchePAC.com. This is going to be very, very interesting.
Well, I didn't really have time to come and tell city council what we should be doing, because they don't listen anyway. What's the difference? You know, I come here and waste my time. But I'm going to be traveling to Guadalajara, and I would say that there is more freedom of speech in this country, otherwise, my ass would have been kicked already a million times. I am not, I may go and visit the Guadalajara City Council in Mexico, but I can't tell them anything, because they'll take me outside and beat me up. So you do have a little more freedom here, but you don't use it wisely, because you use it to enslave other people with your policies. So cut the red tape. Cut the red tape.
John Walsh, followed by Arnold Sachs, followed by Herman. I ask that the other two stand behind the velvet ropes. If you're not there, then we'll go ahead and note and file your card.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. They won't show you my face because they don't like my Jew lip. Don't let that Irish last name fool you. Okay, the Sacramento Bee has already expressed interest. Come to our endorsements, they're up there now. They never up there for a couple of days. Thousands have come already. These are our endorsements, you can trust us. But we have formed Citizens for Leland Yi. He's on the ballot. He deserves to be, forget about what the FBI said about him, those are lies. He is an enemy of guns. He's on the ballot, but there's a conspiracy of the media not to treat him as a legitimate candidate, and he's afraid of saying anything that could be used against him in his FBI trial. So he has decided, or not, to make me, John Walsh, his 100% alter ego. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Arnold and Herman, you're not at the ropes, so I announced it earlier, if you weren't there, you're going to file your card. You're there now, so Herman, we're going to file your card. You were there, but Herman wasn't, so we'll file Herman's card. Go ahead, Arnold.
Fascinating meeting. You know, I only get here on Fridays, but last Friday was a fascinating discussion. Mr. Corretz made a remark regarding the ironic situation with the city of Rialto, the Board of Education, and they're questioning the facts of the Holocaust. And I bring that up because it all depends on what questions are the facts you have in front of you. When I bring to the council's attention the fact that Measure R was a fantasy, you have facts, budgetary facts, we don't care about that. When I bring to the fact that the Gold Line Construction Authority was a fantasy, because it was five years before it was created by state legislation, we don't care about that. The Holocaust was not a result, was a result, not a cause. And that's what facts are. When you have people control information, then you can control the agenda. That's what Rialto should be questioning, that's what you should question with your city council.
All right, thank you very much. So that concludes general public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, I made the announcement earlier, you weren't there. So that concludes the general public comment. That'll be your last warning. So with that, colleagues, do we have any announcements? Announcements, yes?
Just to let you know, on Wednesday, tremendous send-off for Officer Sanchez, as we all know. I did also want to remark, since we didn't meet on that day, that was also what have been John Ferraro's 90th birthday, since the chambers are named after John, and I did want to mention that. Also, I did want to mention to everybody that the observatory is celebrated its 79th anniversary. And for council members, if you have any special needs, you want to get certain youth groups, senior groups up there, please coordinate and organize with Recreation and Parks, Dr. Krupp, and others to open their arms when they're organized and have it on the schedule. I thank you, Mr. Ofero. Last thing, I do want to say this Sunday morning, if you're free, and it is free, there's the Miracle Mile, it's a flat race down Loschel Boulevard, from Orange all the way to the front of Lakewood, the Los Angeles County Museum of Arts, John, right there, where the urban lights are. It's a fun run, starts at 7:00 AM, doesn't cost you a thing, but you get your time on the Flat Mile. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Corretz?
Yes, I'd like to remind people that the Third Annual Israeli Festival at Cheviot Hills Recreation Center is taking place this Sunday from 11:00 to 6:00. It's a great event, celebrating the 66th year of the existence of the State of Israel, and encourage everybody to join us there.
Yes, Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just like to alert people that this weekend, there will be a real-life, full-fire evacuation for residents of Mandeville Canyon in the northern part of my district. This has been a week that we have had stark reminders of the risk of brush fires and forest fires and the incredible risk to public safety, particularly those who live in mountains and canyon areas. LAFD will be doing the first time ever in Mandeville Canyon, but 9:45 Sunday morning, everybody who lives in that area is going to get a phone call, they're being instructed to participate in an evacuation drill and go to Paul Revere School. Will there be a public safety fair throughout the day? But folks, even outside that area, should be aware, this may impact traffic around Sunset or other places in Brentwood on Sunday. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much. Colleagues, an announcement to all the members of the city council. Just a reminder, if I can get everybody's attention, a reminder that next week, on Tuesday, we are going to hear the budget and then take those votes up on Wednesday. If you've got any budget motions, with the exception probably of the Budget and Finance Committee, because any members of that committee probably don't have any, but if you have any, because they were on the committee, if you have any motions, please get them in as soon as possible. If you can bring them in on Tuesday, not on Wednesday, it's incredibly helpful. On Tuesday, the attire, Wednesday, rather, on Wednesday for budget day, we anticipate a long day. So on Wednesday, we are going to go in a casual Bonin attire. So the Bonin attire, can you stand up and model the attire? No tie for the guy? So, blue shirts? Okay. So a little more casual for those folks who wish to be a little more casual on Wednesday. Come relaxed, it's going to be a long day. And with that...
Excuse me, Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
We'll go ahead and post and refer those motions as well. Just two announcements from my district. Tomorrow is the Solid Pancake Breakfast Open House at Devonshire Station, so we invite everybody to come out for that. And then in Chatsworth, we're going to have the Day of the Horse, the annual Day of the Horse, where we celebrate the equestrian lifestyle, and it'll be over at Stony Point Stables on Topanga, and we invite the entire community and the city family to come out to that as well. And so with that, do we have any adjourning motions, colleagues? We have an adjourning motion, so if we can get everybody in council chambers to please rise for adjourning motions, and ask everybody, including members of the public, to please rise. Those in the back, can you please rise? Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. LaBanche?
Members, I ask for adjourning memory of Terrence Galvin O'Brien, who passed away recently. He was born here in Los Angeles, St. Vincent's Hospital, right there at Third and Alvarado, graduate of Loyola High School and Loyola University in Los Angeles, as well as Loyola University in Chicago. He has a 55-year career as practicing dentist, but more important, he was a great volunteer for the Wilshire Area Police. We ask that Terrence O'Brien be remembered. In addition, I ask that we remember Dino Williams, whose family owns and built, constructed the historic market in Beechwood Canyon for many, many years. He was involved in our community in the Hollywood Hills area, graduate of UC Berkeley, and he worked as a city engineer in the early part of his career, Dino Williams. Finally, I ask for adjourning memory of Mel Patton. Mel Patton, who was born also in Los Angeles and graduated university high school, was deemed the fastest man on Earth in the 1948 Olympic Games, a great graduate of USC. He later coached at Long Beach City College and the University of Wichita before returning and working as an executive for Northrop. Mel Patton, fastest man on Earth, he's straight up in heaven. And lastly, Mr. President, I say on this day in 1998, my mom went to heaven. So every time we're on this day, I think of my mom, as I do every day, and those who went before me, so I adjourn in memory in my mind of my mom, Mary Louise LaBanche, who taught me everything I know, along with my dad, too. Thank you, God bless.
Thank you, Mr. LaBanche. Any other adjourning motions? Seeing none or adjourned, be safe out there. Thank you.